The April 13th, 2017 City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Pastor Michael Cook of Oakland Heights Baptist Church. Please rise.
Let's pray together. Father, we're so thankful tonight for your many blessings. We pray that what would be done here tonight would be useful and meaningful work. We pray specifically that each person may fulfill their responsibilities, that they may be used to meet the true needs of our people. We pray tonight for clarity, for these elected officials to do what's right, what's good, what's fitting, for clarity in this agenda that's set before them. And we pray that their very best skills in judgment might be seen tonight. These things we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Cook. Tonight, our employee recognition is centered around the Longview Green and Clean. Longview Green and Clean is a litter cleanup and recycling day. This is a partnership between the City of Longview Sanitation Division and Keep Longview Beautiful, held twice a year on the second Saturday of April and November. Since 2012, we have recycled, wow, 91,939 pounds of electronics, 2,501 tires, 2,100 pounds of batteries, 551 gallons of motor oil, 11,400 pounds of glass bottles. Since 2014, we have had 3,556 volunteers pick up 41,960 pounds of litter. All residents are invited to take part in this great community partnership that seeks to keep our community the cleanest, the most beautiful place to live, work, and play. The employees involved, unfortunately, all of them are here, but those who are here, please come forward. Terry Chaney, Billy Miles, Courtney Nesbit, Lonnie Noth, Roger Piggies, Mike Phillips, David Simmons, Chris Smith, Sammy Spearman, Michael Wiggington, and Jelani Williams. In addition to these employees, we need to recognize Keep Longview Beautiful Executive Director Kim Droge, the Keep Longview Beautiful Board of Directors, and all the many volunteers that participate in this amazing event. Okay, did y'all catch all those numbers? Okay, I want to know who has to weigh that stuff? Because that is, that's astounding. It's phenomenal, number one, it's phenomenal, but we had that much litter and refuse and things needed to be thrown away, but it's even more astounding that we have people that will take the time to pick this up for us. And I'm just going to step back and I'm going to clap for you guys a second. Because what you all do is a very thankless job, but I'm here to publicly say thank you to what you all do and for the work and the time and effort that y'all put in. Because without you all, please come on up, my friend. He was busy counting some garbage back there, he was weighing something. But without you all, we would not be the city that we are, and without your continued support, we won't be the city that we want to be. So all I can do is say thank you for what you all do. Kim, thank you for your organization, your board of directors. Y'all are so important to our community, and I am ever grateful to you all, thank you so very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Don't squeeze in, let's get a picture. I'm not standing next to that guy. Let's give a big round of applause to these men and women who take care of our city. Thank you all so much. Okay, I can't get past that yet. Imagine if no one is picking that up and no one is doing anything with that. It would be piling up on the side of the road like a snowdrift in the winter in a place that has snow. It'd be unbelievable, so wow. That's an amazing thank you to Longview Green and Clean. Thank you all so much. Tonight, we are to citizen comment, and I don't have any speaker cards. Is anyone that would like to speak that did not fill out a speaker card? Hallelujah, grace like rain. Wow, wonderful. Okay, that means we're doing things good, gang. No one's going to complain to us tonight. We have some presentations I am very happy to present tonight. Our first presentation is a proclamation that I'm going to present to Roy White, Jim, and Hetty Pollak. Y'all, please come forward. This is a proclamation regarding Parkinson's Awareness Day, April 13th, 2017. Whereas the Longview Parkinson Support Group has requested the mayor by proclamation recognize April 13th, 2017 as Parkinson's Awareness Day in the City of Longview. Whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurologic disease that is estimated to affect 500,000 to 1.5 million people in the United States, and increased research and education are needed to find more effective treatment for those living with the disease and ultimately a cure for Parkinson's. And so now therefore I am demand by authority vested me as mayor of the City of Longview Texas due to proclaim April 13th, 2017 as Parkinson's Awareness Day in Longview. Two things about this. First off, Ms. Pollak was my children's first grade teacher, and so anything that she would ask of me, she gets. It's just, there's no questions asked. And so I was so thrilled when she asked me to be a part of this. Number one, because Parkinson's is one of those dear to my heart. So it's very important that we recognize this disease because awareness and research is the only thing that will ever bring this to a cure. And if we don't take this opportunity that we can to do what we can, then we're not going to win, and we need to beat this disease. It's a horribly debilitating disease, and there's no real cause and there's no real cure, but we need to find both. And this is the kind of thing that helps us get closer and closer, the awareness, the participation, and the support that you all give. And I just want to thank you all for bringing this to our attention and being so supportive of this for so many people that do suffer from this. Because without awareness, things never change, and I thank you all for what you do. You're so, so special. Thank you so much. Collecting my stuff a second, that was a tough one for me. My father had Parkinson's, very difficult, very difficult disease to watch your loved ones suffer through and go through, but it's wonderful to see the progress that is being made. Next, we have a proclamation regarding East Texas Giving Day, and this will be presented to Holly Fuller and Partners in Prevention. Agencies that participate in East Texas Giving Day are Partners in Prevention, Longview Community Ministries, Expectant Heart, Red Long United Way, East Texas Treatment Center, Longview Habitat for Humanity, Longview Symphony Orchestra, and On Mission Ministries, Jesus Burger. So y'all, please come forward. This is a proclamation regarding East Texas Giving Day, April 25th, 2017. Whereas Longview nonprofit organizations have requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize April 25th, 2017 as the East Texas Giving Day in the City of Longview, and whereas several area nonprofits are registered to participate in an 18-hour online giving opportunity, citizens are encouraged to rally together to support their favorite causes, build a stronger community, and give to local nonprofits. So now therefore I am demand by authority vested me as mayor of the City of Longview due proclaim April 25th, 2017 as East Texas Giving Day in Longview. Holly, thank you. Thank you to all of y'all. And you all realize, you realize the agencies involved here, I mean, look at this, we have multiple agencies represented, and every one of you all have such a role in helping our community. And without your commitment, once again, things just don't get done. You know, people seem to think just because there's a name on a door, something happens, but that's not the way it is. Without volunteers, without people going out there every day and putting their heart and soul into things, we don't have the things that we are accomplishing without you ladies and what you all do. So thank you for helping those that need it the most, and we appreciate your time, your efforts, your commitment. Longview's a better place because of you ladies. Thank you all so much. Thank you all so very much. Our next proclamation is regarding Longview Gregton Rotary, PRCA Rodeo Day. Michael Shirley. You guys want to come? Come on up, Steve. Council Representatives, Steve Pertle, David Wright, y'all in the audience, come on up. This is Longview Gregton Rotary Club. I'm thinking pink is their theme. It's okay, geez. If you were wearing pink, I'd really be in trouble. I know, but not up here, I couldn't take it, nothing. Okay, Longview Gregton Rotary, PRCA Rodeo Day, April 24th, 2017. Whereas Longview Gregton Rotary Club has requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize April 21st, 2017 as Longview PRCA Rodeo Day in the City of Longview. Whereas the Longview Gregton Rotary Club contributes to the quality of life in the City of Longview and Gregg County by providing community events that also serve as fundraisers and through which a multitude of local nonprofit organizations have benefited. So now therefore I am demand by authority vested me as mayor of the City of Longview due proclaim April 21st, 2017 as Longview Gregton Rotary, PRCA Rodeo Day in Longview. Michael, I'll give it to you. Okay, how many of y'all have been to the rodeo? Way better, how many of y'all have never been to the rodeo? You have to go. It is the funnest event, and I'm just telling you, the mutton bustin', you will laugh your head off at those kids. It is so much fun. And the bull riding is my favorite because I used to do that when I was a kid. Not really. I am so scared of those kind of animals. But it is the funnest event, and it's a great time to take your family, to see people in Longview. It's packed, it's a blast, but without the Longview Gregton Rotary Club, this event would not happen. You all put a ton, ton, ton of work into this event, because every year, when you go out there and see them, the people wearing pink, that's how many people it takes to put this event on. And it's a multitude of volunteers, it's a ton of people. But without you, we couldn't do it, and I appreciate y'all's commitment. The Rotary Club, all the Rotary Clubs help our community, but you all take a special time to do this for the rodeo, and it's a great event. So support the rodeo, support our community, and say thank you to someone wearing a pink shirt that night because that means they have spent time and effort to put this event on, and we really, really appreciate what y'all do for us. Thank you so much. Thank you all so much. I will definitely be there, I will. Thank y'all. Well, that was wonderful. Those are three great presentations tonight, and I appreciate you all putting those together for our city. We're now at our public safety update. Chief Bishop's out of town, Chief Stillman, it's all yours, buddy.
Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Willard, thank you for the opportunity to update you on a very busy two weeks that the fire department has undertaken. We've been involved recently with a lot of specialized training in the community. You might have seen some of this going on at our training field. It's actually been taking place at the old Stroh's Brewery today. This first class I want to talk about is, it was a course called Nozzle Forward. And you know, when you think about fighting fire, you don't think of dragging hose lines off of a truck and taking them into a burning building and putting water in the right spot is a very complicated process. But I promise you, it's a highly tactical process, and there's a lot of strategy that has to go into that. So this course empowered our people to make better decisions, to use better mechanics when they're handling the pressures of those hose lines and the nozzle reaction and the force that goes along with that, to enable them to get that hose line, not only to the seat of the fire, to quickly put the fire out, but to also get that hose line between any survivable victims that may still be inside of those structures. So we had several, several of our members went through this. It's also drew in people from around the state and I think even out of state. All said, I believe there were just over 50 participants in this training that spent a couple of days here in Longview training with our folks. A big shout out on that one real quick to Captain Ben Harrison, who was our point person on that with our train division, and also the Longview Professional Firefighters Association served as a sponsor to get this training here. The next thing is our annual tank car safety course. This is something that we've been doing for, I think, close to 15 years now, since the late 90s. We're very fortunate and blessed in Longview with the history of the railroad that we have, that they have a firm footprint in our community. So this is another collaborative effort between the Longview Fire Department, Union Pacific Railroad, Trinity Industries, and Texas Eastman to put on almost a one-of-a-kind training event as far as at a national level. There's actually only one other school that's comparable to this, and it's in Pueblo, Colorado every year. So this gets in contractors, hazardous materials responders, firefighters, other first responders, to teach them how to deal with the aftermath of train incidents, train derailments. You've just seen one here recently in the East Texas area, I believe, over in Malikoff. And that was about three weeks ago, and they're still going through the cleanup phase to get that restored and get things back, the life back to normal over there in Malikoff. And it's because of responders like this showing up and working together that eventually make those problems start to go away. Very complex process, this is actually a shot at our training field. You've seen it, we've got a four-car train derailment down there that is a key component to us being able to offer and provide this type of training here. And this next thing is pretty impressive, the participants, everything that's shaded in green, that's where our students came from. So it's really heavily there, you know, Texas, Arkansas, Louisiana, but then you jump up to Canada and out to Arizona, so that's the kind of draw that we have. And we've actually had people from other countries come to this training, so it's a very valuable thing that we have here in our community. The next is the USAR, the Urban Search and Rescue Training. This is actually what's been going on the last couple of days out at Sam Dunn Enterprises, the old Stroh Brewery. And before I forget, I want to give a quick shout out to Mr. Dunn. He is over the top as far as his hospitality goes to allow our crews to use that old brewery building, the part of the complex that he doesn't use for anything that they want to do training-wise. And it offers a multitude of different scenarios that these participants, and for this training class, there was over 100 people that showed up. The Texas Task Force One is made up of first responders from all over the state. Texas Task Force Two is made up solely of members of the Dallas Fire Department. And then there's a Texas Task Force One, Region Three, which is members from the Rio Grande Valley that all converged here in Longview for the last couple of days to go through this. It's specialized training. A lot of times when you see USAR teams being used, it's in the aftermath of some type of a large spread natural disaster, hurricane, earthquake, flooding. It could be a man-made event such as 9/11. When you saw those people working on those piles, there was a lot of USAR teams that converged on that, a lot of heavy rigging. You see the crane involved in moving big pieces of machinery and equipment and things around. There's a lot of skill that goes into that and making good decisions and being able to do it safely. So again, we're proud to have members on Texas Task Force One, and we're very fortunate to be able to have this quality of training here in Longview. Another thing I want to talk about, here recently with some of the storms that have come through, our siren, our early warning system has been a topic of conversation, which it typically is on the aftermath of a wind event or especially a tornado event. And I just want to remind our citizens that our early warning system is based on a twofold process. The first and the most visible are the actual warning sirens, the audible outdoor warning sirens, and there's a map of how they're distributed around our city. There's a lot of overlapping coverage. We have a 20-siren system in our city. And naturally, as our city footprint grows over time, this is something that we have to look at expanding. We haven't added any sirens in quite some time. You can see there are a few gaps in that overlap. A lot of those areas where it's gapped are either undeveloped, some of them may be in the floodplain. But I think there's a false expectation out there with our community that wherever they're at in their house, they're going to hear that siren, and unfortunately, that's not the case. Houses are so well insulated that if you're not within a certain proximity to that siren, you may or may not get a good audible hearing of being able to hear that tone when that siren rotates around. The major intent of the outdoor warning system of the sirens is to let the public know that, hey, we know something that you need to know about. So that means you need to tune in to weather, you need to start paying attention. That's why that siren is going off. Everybody in the community knows that we test these sirens at noon on the first Wednesday of every month if the weather's permitting. So the other part of this that I want to speak about is our Code Red telephone notification system. And the goal of Code Red, and this is a free service that the city offers to all of its residents. Anybody that lives in the city limits can go to the city's website at longviewtexas.gov/CodeRed and register their telephone to receive a phone call that will tell you why that siren's going off. And in the event that you can't hear that siren going off, but you're still going to get a phone call if you're registered to say, hey, we know something that you need to know about so that you can protect yourself and take proper precaution. So our Code Red numbers are going up. I believe the last time we really took an in-depth look, we were at 37% of the city participated with Code Red, and I think we're up to 45 now. But we've still got a lot of room for people to get signed up for this free service. So I'm happy to answer any questions about that, but we're very fortunate, we do have a very comprehensive and extensive warning system in our city, and we're lucky to have that. A lot of cities don't do it to the degree that we do it here in Longview. A lot has been invested in making sure that our citizens know what's going on. Last thing I want to talk about, and I've got a little video footage, this was actually talking about the dangers for firefighters. This was a vehicle fire that our crews responded to just yesterday morning out on Bernice Drive. This is actually in Council District Number Five. These guys were fighting, this is a single company response going to a car fire, okay? And when they got to the car, you see when they're making the approach, if you'll look down there where that firefighter's kneeling down, you'll see something shoot out of that car. Barely missed that guy. It takes off like a rocket. It was actually one of these struts, and these are on everything, these are on your hood, on your trunk, that are pressurized. And when the fire heats that strut up, it'll shoot that steel rod out of there like a missile. And so this was a close call for us. We were very fortunate that we didn't have a firefighter struck by that piece of steel rod coming out of that vehicle, just in the course of them doing their normal job. And even though they're protected to the highest degree that we can with their turnout gear, they're wearing their respiratory protection from the smoke, if that steel rod were to hit that guy, there's an example of what it did to another firefighter, where it impaled through his leg through his turnout gear. So we had a near miss on this one, then you can see what the exploded strut looks like. So this is something our people face every day. So the message to the citizens is, if you're around in that neighborhood and you're standing close enough like that person was, we're lucky we got that captured on video, but we want you to back away from that because there's just so many variables with a vehicle fire or any kind of a fire, that you need to protect yourself first. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, Chief, thank you for that very informative update, and Chief, thank you for making the citizens aware of what we actually have in Longview, because I know we don't always participate in the things that are available, but you know, we're in that time of year where those sirens are going to go off a little bit more frequently, and we appreciate the update and the coverage that you all give for us, and you guys be safe out there. Thank you very much, sir. Where's our consent agenda? Anything that the council like pulled off for separate discussion?
I don't want to pull anything off. I just had a question about the green, the contract for the green.
Okay, what's your question, sir?
I guess Roland, I noticed there's some pretty big differences in the contract.
Wait, that's action item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're consent agenda right now, just one second, we'll get to that in a second, Roland. Consent agenda.
I had item E.
Item E?
Roland. Okay, how many bids did we take on that, Roland?
On the roofing contract? There were three bids that we took.
What was the spread on those?
The spread in those was, between the first bid was 88,000, the second bid was 109, so there was a $21,000 difference in the two low bids. The last one was a $249,000 bid.
How is that paid out?
Upon completion, there are 30-day invoices that they submit on percentage of work, and those are billed out on a monthly basis if it does take that long.
Do they have to provide us with a bond?
Yes, sir, they do.
Okay.
Roland, how do you go from 80,000 to 200 and something thousand dollars on the same bid?
A lot of times you'll see a large bid spread, so like the second bidder was obviously much closer, and that was here out of White Oak, Texas, so it was closer. A lot of times they price their bids depending on the work, the amount of work that they're currently, they've undertaken. When you see outlier bids that are much larger than the base bid, a lot of times companies will just bid out of convenience to make sure that cities have the number of bids for review, but they definitely don't want the job, so that's a lot of times how they do that.
They might warn it at 239,000.
And that's usually why they throw in that extra bid, that's correct.
Yes, ma'am. When we were looking at this, I know we've been looking at this for several years, what was the amount that you guys actually thought we may end up? What was that projection, do you remember, when we first started looking at that roof?
I do not, we had two roofs within the budget this year, and this is within our projected budget, but I don't have those initial estimates.
I was just curious, because I was thinking that initially it was a little over 100 and something thousand dollars, it was like 230. And so that's why I think this is great.
With advanced roofing, we have had a history, they've done some workforce, they did some work at Fire Station Five, they've been responsive to any issues we've had. They also, I think, were actually the contractors that worked on the roof at the animal shelter as well.
Very good.
Most approve.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Consent agenda passes. Now to zoning. The public hearing will be held considering application Z 17-02 by Yolanda Barron, Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Willard. The applicant is requesting to rezone from agriculture to heavy commercial. Approximately half the property is already zoned heavy commercial, as you can see there in the red. The applicant is already utilizing this portion for RV storage and needs to come into compliance. Gilmer Road is a state highway which is appropriate for this type of development. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Yes. Well, first of all, this requires a public hearing, which is now open. Mr. Wright?
Angela, what I'd like to do, I have no problem with what this property's currently being used for. My church stored some trailers there, we didn't have any problem, I don't have any problem at all with that. But my concern is that we're going from agricultural to heavy commercial, that's a pretty big change right there. What I would like to do is pull this and send it back to P&amp;Z and have it set up as a planned development so that we can limit what can be done there, because C2 is pretty broad. And what I would like to do is move that we pull this and send it back to P&amp;Z for a planned development.
Yes, sir.
Is there any other comments in the public hearing? The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move that we table this, send it back to P&amp;Z, and for discussion as a planned development.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now at an action item. Consider a resolution authorizing a director city manager or city manager's designated need have a contract with Harrison, Walker, and Harper of Paris, Texas. Mr. McPhee?
Yes. Good evening, mayor, city council. The revised resolution I had before you is to award the contract in the amount of $1,36,133.11 to We Build Incorporated, which is doing business as HWH Industrial of Paris, Texas. I needed to revise that just to make sure that we awarded it to how the proposer proposed on the project. I'm thrilled to bring this before you, it's been a long, arduous process. In 2014, Keep Longview Beautiful came up with a vision, and this is their concept plan that they've actively worked plan that they've actively worked to pursue funding and additional opportunities from others to make this a reality. This is the final plan of 2017 that we're taking bids on that includes the elements that were originally this vision, so I like to tell us the story that this is the vision that's become a reality. We received six bids, five bids were within 22% of each other, with We Build Incorporated being the low bid. In response to your questions about the bid closeness, we were really encouraged. When you see lots of tight bids, there was about $200,000 separating four of the bids, which were the four low bids. That tells us we've got a really good set of plans that there weren't a lot of questions about. Obviously, We Build wanted it more than the second and third bidder, but the second and third bidder were only separated by $60,000 on a little over a million dollar bid. Once again, I think this is something to celebrate. Keep Longview Beautiful raised $100,000. They leveraged this money to garner support from the City of Longview, Longview Economic Development Corporation, and Gregg County. They also paid for and applied for a grant to leverage that additional contribution to obtain a grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife. Uh, I'm very happy with the plans we got. It is within budget, and it allows us to maintain the construction testing and materials testing during construction. So, it's, once again, it's an outdoor event venue, walking trails, pavilions, play areas, music nodes, and an educational area for the public. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Wright, you had a question on this one?
Yes, I do have a question, and it's about the budget, or the, the contracts. I know that some of them are pretty close, within a couple hundred thousand dollars or something like that, oh, that's a pretty good chunk of money to me, but, and that goes up to, what, 1.6 million, I think. So, let's say We Build comes in and says, okay, I can do it for this $1 million, and then they find out, down the road, they start on it, and they find out, well, you know, these other guys who had these higher bids, they were right. What recourse do they have to come back to get more money from us? Do we have to give them more money, or are they stuck with what they bid?
That's one of the things that, to be quite frank with you, that's our job to make sure that the plans and the specifications require the end product that we want. And so, once they, you enter into that contract, you actually have fixed prices for certain activities. The activities and the requirements of such are detailed in the specification book, which is a very large document, and that's what we spend a lot of time getting right. So, unfortunately, they're agreeing, or fortunately, they're agreeing to exactly what we want going into the contract and are aware of all the requirements that we have.
So, they can't come back to us and say, we want more money for this because we screwed up?
They, they can, but I would, I would submit they probably would not be successful.
Thank you for submitting that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, real quick?
Uh, one quick question. After you give the contractor a notice to proceed, how many days do they have to complete?
The contract allows for them to have 45 days to gather their bonds and insurance. We have specified in the contract time 180 construction days. Uh, I, I would submit that just due to the location of this, to the proximity of the Grace Creek floodplain, obviously, those things can impact schedule.
All right. Well, I just wanted, oh, go ahead.
No.
Oh, I just wanted to thank Ms. Drogi and her whole team that has put this together, because this is going to be an outstanding venue for Longview, that, that's once again coming in one of our entryways, that's going to really make us stand out. Well, they took basically an eyesore and are making it into, um, a gorgeous event. And thanks to the City of Longview, to Leadco, to Gregg County, all those entities that have come out there and helped fund this, but this all goes to, um, the Green Group, and we appreciate y'all so much for the effort y'all have put in that. Yes. Is there a motion?
Most approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Odds of community interest, Mr. Moore?
Uh, last fall, I was privileged to, uh, be, uh, included in the strategic planning process for Pine Tree ISD. Uh, Monday night, uh, their school board unanimously adopted the strategic plan. Um, I think there's great opportunity for the city to coordinate and cooperate with all of our school districts. Uh, case in point, this evening, the inter-local agreement for fiber optic cable with Pine Tree is a win-win for, for everybody, so, um, I'm encouraged that Pine Tree is going to go forward and hopefully think outside the box. Uh, second, last month, uh, our Congress, both houses of Congress unanimously passed legislation that the President signed designating March 29th each year as Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Day. Why March 29th, you ask? Well, I'll tell you. March 29th, 1973, the last combat troops were ordered out of Vietnam. Uh, we have a wonderful Vietnam recognition area at Teague Park. Our mayor, every council meeting, asked the public to help defray the debt they have, and if I might be so presumptuous, Andy, on behalf of veterans, I thank you for doing that, and frankly, I hope you don't have to do it very much longer.
We will keep doing it, though, Ed, don't you worry.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Notting. Ms. Williams?
Um, good evening, everyone. Um, that is a picture, I had the privilege today of spending time with my adopted class at East Texas Christian School, um, and I played ping pong, and what I will say is, when you play ping pong with a group of kids, you need headgear, you need the pool protective, everything. I didn't know that, but we had a really good time, and I, I really enjoyed being with Ms. Holly Sikorski's class today. They're always just really a pleasure. Um, second, uh, last Saturday, I want to give a huge shout out to Ms. Brandis Jamerson and It Takes a Village. Her organization put on a phenomenal summer fest and Easter egg hunt at Broughton Park. It was amazing. I was running a little late because I had some other things going on, too, but I had an opportunity to really see the kids enjoying themselves, and just want to remind everybody that that's what it takes to shift the paradigm and the thought process between one area of town and another, or between one ethnicity and another. That's how we build those bridges within our communities. So, again, thank you to Brandis and all the people in the community who helped to sponsor the event. Um, last but not least, to my fellow Rotarians, I was just playing with y'all earlier, okay? My council members over here, I'm a Rotaryian here, we're just in different clubs, but again, at the end of the day, our motto is service above self. You guys put on an absolutely phenomenal event each year. I've been there. I'm kind of a cowgirl. Everybody knows I love my guns, too, okay? And I love horses. Um, but anyway, thank you for what you continue to do, and together, all of our clubs in this region, we're having an impact, not only locally, but in the state, nationally, and all over the world. So, thank you, my, my brothers and sisters in Rotary.
Thanks, Ms. Williams. Ms. Ishihara?
Happen for me?
Mr. Wright?
Yeah, first of all, Kesha, your apology is accepted.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Um, I'm fortunate in our district to have somebody who's been recognized here a couple of times tonight, Kim Drogi. Thank you very much for all you do for the city. Uh, you've done a great job, and the green is fantastic, and all the trash pickup is, too. And, uh, Pine Tree, I actually do have a little bit of Pine Tree in my district, and we were out Saturday, and the Rotary Club was picking up trash along Fairmont Street, and we had a couple of clubs from, we had a Rotorack Club and a couple other clubs from Pine Tree High School helping us. And then the soccer team, I've seen them out twice now, going up and down Bill Owens' picking up trash, and they do a great job of that. So, I want to, uh, really thank the Pine Tree High School for all their help in trying to keep Longview a more beautiful place.
Thanks, Mr. Wright. Mr. Pertle?
Yeah.
Mr. Willard?
Yes.
Okay, well, you want to help a park in Longview? Nominate Longview to win a $20,000 grant to improve Teague Park. Go to n-r-p-a.org/BeInspired and nominate Longview. This will help us, uh, to try to achieve this grant, which will really help Teague Park, so please do that. We have adult summer softball and kickball registration is now, May the 12th. Call Parks at 903-237-1270, or register online at longviewtexas.gov/parks. Longview Library's Genealogy Lock-in is Saturday, April 22nd, from 4:00 to 10:00. Okay, okay, I have to know, what, do you lock in until you find out who you're related to, or what, Laura?
It'll keep you captive until you find out.
That's awesome. I think that I might, I may actually do that. I would love to know where I actually came from. Um, and so would a lot of other people, I'm sure. That's great. I like that. Okay, City of Longview office will be closed Friday, April 14th, in observance of the Good Friday holiday. As Mr. Moore said, the Veterans Plaza at Teague Park, please help honor our American veterans. It's so easy to donate. Go to VetPlaza.org. Once again, I'll say it again, I'll say it every time, give us $5. Give us $5, and this will be over with before you know it. So, I'm going to keep saying it until you give me your $5, all right? So, thank you for that, and, uh, we will get that done. We have upcoming events. There are several upcoming events throughout the Longview community. Downtown Live, April 21st, featuring Dag Nabbit, they're certainly a local favorite, and we love them. How many of y'all have been to any of the downtown lives so far? The turnout has been fantastic. Um, it's growing and growing and growing. The food trucks are out there, the weather's been perfect, the entertainment has been amazing, the new stage that, uh, the Hundred Acres Heritage built is, it's just perfect out there. So, come out, enjoy, meet your neighbors, see your friends, and let's support Dag Nabbit. They're a wonderful group that always is out there, um, doing things for our community, so we appreciate that. As we said, the Longview Greggton PRCA rodeo is April 21st and 22nd. Make plans to attend, um, it's a blast. And the Harvest Festival Crawfish Boil, my favorite event of the year, is also April 22nd, uh, at Mod Cop. If you have never been to that, you are missing something. It is, I can't even tell you how many pounds of crawfish they boil every year. I think it's like 20,000 pounds of crawfish. It's incredible. But they put an amazing feast out there, but you got to get your tickets for that, and then you can walk over and watch the rodeo. You can't have a better night. Crawfish and rodeo, it's awesome. Dak Prescott will be at the Beltray Center on Friday, April 28th, um, doing a fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Clubs. We all know who Dak Prescott is, and more importantly, he's got an amazing message. This young man came from humble beginnings, and he's at the pinnacle of, of his profession, and so, we should, uh, do everything we can to support that, plus it supports, um, our Boys and Girls Clubs, which is such an important event. For more information on these events, please check out the calendar and vis, at visit longviewtexas.com to learn more. Put your events on the calendar, they'll be read at council meetings, so please participate. Survey time. You knew I was going to do something about the homeless, since we're in the middle of our homeless task force meetings right now, so here's the first question. How many homeless residents would you guess reside in Longview? The answer, well, here's the answers you all gave. 50 to 100, 10%. 400 to 500, 46%. 750 to 1,000, 27%. 1,500 to 2,000, 16%. I'm glad y'all are wrong on most of those. The actual number is 480, so it's between 400 and 500. Um, so we have 480 homeless residents in Longview according to our point-in-time survey that was just released, and in case you're wondering, um, that's up from last year. Last year, we were at 397, so we're a plus 83 this year in our homeless count. I'll talk more about that in a minute, because our next question, of those homeless residents, what percentage would you guess became homeless in Longview as opposed to becoming homeless elsewhere and relocating here? 5% got 20% of the vote. 27%, 38% of the vote. 46%, 32% of the vote. 73%, 11% of the vote. This is kind of confusing, but what this means is, here's, here's the deal. Of the 480 homeless people that live in Longview, how many of them are from Longview? That's the bottom line. The answer is 133, so 27%, which means the rest of those homeless populace are coming here from other places, and that's part of why we're having a homeless task force, because that's, I, I, our goal is to help our fellow citizens. That's our goal, and we will, because that's what we do. We're compassionate, caring people, but we do not, under any circumstances, want to become known as a hub for homeless people in the state of Texas or the state of Louisiana. That is not our intention. So, this task force is focusing on one goal, and that's how can we reduce our homeless population? That's our, that's our purpose, because we want to help these individuals out of their situation and into a better life, but we do not want to be a hub for the homeless population in our, in our state. That's not our goal. So, thank you for taking the survey. It's an interesting, it's an interesting topic, and I'm going to talk about that somewhere in just a minute, but, um, well, we'll get to that in a minute. Scholarship. Thank you all for those that submitted an application. I just received them this week. I cannot wait to start reading them, because the joy I get out of that, it's just, it's, I can't explain it. But I will be making the selections in the next few weeks. We'll probably announce the winners at our first meeting in May. But thank you to those that participated. We had a lot of participation this year, a lot more than we had last year, which is good. It's going to grow every year, but that makes the competition even more difficult, but I enjoy it and I look forward to it, so it's going to be a fun time. Okay, let's have an update on our homeless task force. As I told you all, and the public and the media, we will make regular updates as to how we're proceeding in this task force, because the council's not invited to this, so you all don't know any more than anyone else does, because I haven't talked to any of you all about this, because it's not time yet. But as we have our meetings, we will tell you what's going on and bring you up to speed so that we can continue our work, because we have a lot of work to do. We've had two meetings, which have both been very productive. Um, we have a committee of over 30-plus individuals representing nonprofits, churches, healthcare, public safety, and the City of Longview. Our task force on homelessness, we have discussion topics. We have roles of shelters, nonprofits, coordination and collaboration services, work opportunities within the city, mental health concerns, communication and education, ordinance, ordinance reviews, and aesthetics. These are the things that we're trying to wrap our hands around and come up with some healthy discussion on how we can have a positive effect in this, uh, with this issue. Our task force on homelessness, here's some examples of ideas that have been generated, and let me tell you what, we have some brilliant people on this task force that have such special ideas and such special knowledge, because they live this. They, they, they devote their lives to this issue, and the ideas that have been generated are, um, very encouraging, very encouraging, because you get to see different viewpoints and different scenarios, which is how you come to conclusions by having different viewpoints and then talking about, and that's what they're doing every time we meet, and in between the times that we, we meet. We've generated these ideas. There's opportunity for better collaboration between organizations and agencies. There's a need to honor the rights of homeless as well as other residents. We have a need to develop educational campaigns on how to assist Longview's homeless, and we need to review applicable, applicable city ordinances to make this a better, um, avenue for our homeless population. We need to create a homeless outreach team in the police department, which I've talked to Chief Bishop about. There are certain cities that have already done this, Lubbock, Austin, Houston, there's, we're not reinventing the wheel on some of these, but we're taking information they've already utilized and what works to try to see if we can't mold it into something that will work for our community. We form partnerships between police, mental health professionals, and service providers. Research alternatives to fine, to fines and jail time modeled after drug courts in conjunction with the shelters and explore incentive programs for treatment. You popped a girl, Kesha.
I'm sorry.
As you can see, this is a lot of discussion and a lot of ideas. And if we can just make progress on some of them, we'll be successful. But we're not going to stop there because this is a dedicated group of people that are serving our community. We're going to tackle this until we come up with a solution that's going to be good for our citizens and our homeless population to make Longview a better place. The people who serve this committee are putting in hours and hours and hours of their time dedicated to this, to this endeavor and I can't thank them enough. Some of them are here in the audience tonight. I appreciate you being here, I appreciate your support. You know, we meet every other week and in between those meeting times, they meet on their own to continue these discussions in groups, in smaller groups. They break up into smaller groups to formulate ideas and opinions that we bring back together to the main group again and then we discuss these things. And once again, I have gained so much knowledge from the individuals here who, like I said, they live this, they know what's going on and together, we're going to come up with something that I think Longview is going to be very proud of when we finish this task force. And we will not, we will not cease our meetings until we have completed the task. And as I told them in our first meeting, it's a huge mountain to climb, but when we get to the summit of that mountain, we're all going to be so proud of what we've done and I appreciate their time, their effort, city staff, everybody involved for what they're doing because this is an endeavor that's, it's a worthwhile subject that we're going to continue with. So, thank you all for your patience. Thank you, council, for your understanding of why you're not there, but know that we'll keep you up to date and informed as well as citizens of Longview. And remember, we have set up a website within the city of Longview. If you want to send us an email from the citizens, suggestions that you have, we are open to all information that the city of Longview wants to present to us. We will read every single email and we'll put it into effect, the ones that we think are, are, are good ideas. Because there's not one simple solution to this issue. It's a multifactorial issue that we have to look at all, all the spokes of the wheel. So, we're taking input from everybody. You all will know people on this committee, give them information, they'll bring it to the committee. This is an open, knowledge gaining exercise that we're trying to do. So, we appreciate the...
Can I say one thing before you move on with that?
Please.
I suspect that I speak for all of council. I just wanted to tell you that I appreciate your leadership in this area. I think that, I've heard so much positive feedback on your initiative to address this issue, which is not going to be easy, but it is very important. And I just want to tell you, I really appreciate that. I think, you know, you've put yourself out there as a leader in this area on something that needs to be addressed and so I appreciate that very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you, I appreciate y'all's support, you know, I always do. Thank you very much. With that, we know that this is Easter weekend coming up. I hope everyone has a wonderful, safe holiday. Enjoy your time with your family and friends. How many of y'all gave something up for lint? I had more hands the last time. I would have had three people in the audience. Who gave something up for lint?
I did not.
How many of y'all have held your, way to go, Laura. Key, good job. Okay, mine's at half mast because I can't go all the way up because I, I gave up, it was kind of hard for me, not hard, I'm not, I mean, it's, I gave up foul language and because sometimes it comes out, okay? It just sometimes does.